I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is the hands of our nation in this whole. Welcome. Uh, can we get real quick please?
Mr. Boran?
Here.
Mr. Blanton?
Here.
Mr. Rosson?
Yeah, here.
Alright, welcome again, um, I go to trustee Roberson.
Good evening, um, this is the first of our two ambassador meetings and I just wanted to say that I've been here long enough now to know that no matter how much we try to do outreach, um, there was still going to have people that are going to say, you know what, I showed up on a lecture day and I didn't know anybody. Uh, but what I can say wholeheartedly is that I think with this board and, and the administration has done, uh, in my opinion, everything we could possibly do to try to push information out. This was in, you know, in my mailbox a couple of days ago. This was on my, uh, on my door just the last day or so. If you look at our website, if you look at, uh, our social media, um, pretty much every aspect of any avenue that we have to communicate, um, we do that pushing information out. So I'm very proud of that. And with that concept of the, the ambassador meeting was created, um, I actually kind of came up with a concept a couple of years ago because you don't have to have a title, be an elected official, serve on a committee or anything else to be an ambassador. We're all ambassadors. And the idea is that you're here, whether you go back to your church or your Kiwanis group or your Knights of Columbus or you're sitting in the driveway having beers with your neighbors or whatever else. You're, you can be an ambassador for our township. You can talk about what you hear tonight, you can tell people what you've learned. Um, you can be a champion for our, for what we're trying to do or what we're trying to create here. So, uh, that's the whole idea behind the ambassador, uh, you know, concept. Um, and I hope that, uh, appreciate you all coming out and taking the time to be informed tonight and I hope you go out and get spread the word. So, so I have.
Alright, thank you. So I just got a few things before I go to trustee Boran. So the first one is all the crazy weather we have right now, we closed Miami Township West Park today for the river flooding. We took a lot of precautionary measures to keep people out of there. We put up, uh, our maintenance department put up, uh, temporary fencing, try to contain the, uh, driftwood drift that comes off and into the backwater. They're pushing back into our park. And this also saves us a lot of money for them if we continue that. So this is the first time we're trying and, uh, I think it's going to work. I've been, man, it thinks it's going to work and board goes, so we'll see how it goes, but I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. We, our park gets used, I don't know many people we have, but it gets used extensively. We make, we love that park and we developed it and it's giving great use out of it. I like the thought of it. Um, on the flip side of that, I just came from our senior center, we had M County Library and Ranch there, uh, showing you the library zone. So we're still in the final stages of it. It's going to be seven, eight thousand square feet. It's going to be located in the Village of Cleats, it's still going to be Miami Township, uh, Ranch. Um, they're still designing it, it's going to cost, she said anywhere from six to six and a half million dollars. So it's really going to be a beautiful facility for the community, for the Village of Cleats and for Miami Township. It's going to be really wonderful, I think. So with that, uh, trustee Boran.
Alright, so, um, I think a lot of, a lot of the reading people are here tonight to talk a little bit about the, the fire levy and get some questions answered here. Again, great information in the, uh, in the mail that was out there, we just copied that as well. Um, you know, part of what it is that we've done as board, we put on, uh, a levy that come up here in May for four and a half mil. Uh, that four and a half bills we generate for the township, uh, one million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And basically the cost for individual be about fifteen dollars for a hundred thousand. That was, uh, uh, definitely different than what we put on the ballot last year. We did a three point five renewal with a three mil new levy, we would have generated one million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And what it costs, uh, each of it back there, a hundred eighty-nine dollars for a hundred thousand there. So that levy failed. Um, the focus of that levy, a lot of people questioned why we put that on there the way that we did. We were basically trying to get the fire fund in its own separate, it's its own separate entity. Right now, the general fund, uh, is still used. And we're still happy to give the four five levy on here. So trying to get that out of there. Um, the four five, uh, should be able to take us through to, uh, for twenty-nine, uh, issues. With that being said, this year has been a little tougher. You've seen, uh, some social media stuff about some of these firehouses, uh, funding issues. I ran out some of these firehouses, we're trying to be very ethically responsible, uh, this year with things like that. You know, we lost nine or twenty thousand dollars from this three point five renewal that did not come through. So with that being said, we'll take questions, so the rest of the board, take questions. Uh, hopefully we can, we can get through what's on people's minds tonight. We'll start that.
We'll just open up the floor if you'd like to bring out a question for the board or if you want a question to be answered. You would come up and stand at the podium, we appreciate it. If you just say your name, give us your question and we'll be, we'll try to answer it as soon as we can. Okay, we'll get to the slide.
Nobody has any questions right off the top of their head. I do have a couple of, um, slides that will kind of answer questions that people have called in and asked. Um, Matt, if you could take us to the next slide.
And then we could go back to the, and we could go back to you.
So in our newsletter, um, and on our website, we have a breakdown of where your tax dollars go. The school district here gets the majority of the money that you pay to Hampton County. Uh, township is second, it's twenty-one percent. So, uh, every hundred dollars that you pay in taxes, twenty-one dollars comes back to the township. And then you can see the other levies that are up there, um, children served as development disability. County general fund gets four point one percent. Um, one down, uh, the public library has a three point six percent of your, your money that helps pay for that new library. So, uh, people were interested in how much money that they sent to the county actually feedbacked us, so we, we got that for you. And Matt, can you go to the next slide? Somebody asked me a really good question because it's something that we know because we're here, but not everybody thinks of. It's a ball. So you, what I pay, a hundred percent of that goes to the fire fund? Well, no it doesn't. Uh, if you look at this, our, our general fund, um, gets, um, thirty-eight point one percent of our money. Fire fund gets twenty-one point nine. Our police district levies bring in seventeen point three percent of our tax dollars. Our waste district brings in twenty-two point seven. So of every hundred dollars you pay in township tax, twenty-one point nine, twenty-one dollars and ninety cents of that goes to the fire department. So you can go one more slide for me, chief? So the graph on the left is available on the auditor's website for your home. And we have a computer set up in the back if you'd like to find your home and go to exactly what the township portion would be. Uh, there's also a spot on there that's called levies and you can go in and see what the new levy will cost you for your home. Uh, this is the current home, the, um, the graph on the left is based on a home that's three hundred and five thousand dollars in value. So you can see that we bring in about five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-four cents for the township. Out of that, schools get about a, a thousand, two hundred and like every year.
Twelve fifty?
Twelve fifty. So if you look over to the right, um, just because I like pie charts, because I like to see how much of what goes where. The orange circle at the bottom, or the orange, pie at the bottom of the circle, that's twenty-one point nine percent. That's the amount that you pay in fire fund taxes right now. So anybody has any questions? Board and I will be glad to try to answer them, chief is here tonight. That's, yeah, that's pretty much it.
My name is Rick, senior president. Um, but the last election, I guess the thing that was confusing is Miami Township Fire Department services, yes, corporate districts, the Cleats, Addison and Miami Township and, yeah.
Or Vankey.
Or Pendleton. And my real simple question, why does everybody pay the same? Why isn't the tax levy the same for every district? Why doesn't everybody pay the same share?
Right, yeah, I think that. So the burden of billings are in contract. With Miami Township, they get, I say, uh, by, so they're contracted, like you have contracted the spectrum. Uh, they contract with us with that no buy-in piece. We, as another corporate area, we have the fire department that is the Village of Cleats, Village of Addison, or Village of North Bend says tomorrow, we don't want your service anymore. We still have to have adequate fire protection, be able to take care of, um, the township, the, so. We, we look at the contract, we get through negotiating contracts and contracts were designed, uh, over the last week with the villagers. There have been significant increases to reach the villagers. Um, we're not, not quite, uh, not quite there yet, but, uh, I think it was the first step, uh, in doing pieces there. So if you want the numbers on that, I'm happy to share the numbers as to what those increases look like. Um, you know, the, the Village of Cleats was paying, uh, two hundred and fifty-two thousand. That has raised to three hundred and sixty thousand for this year and will increase all the way through twenty twenty-nine. There's some, some built-in increases and raises inside of there which there haven't been in the past. Uh, the Village of North Bend, uh, was at one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, what they were paying. Uh, they are currently at two fifty, it's two fifty-eight, it's a change, man, two fifty-eight. So significant increase there along with some, some bumps each and every year to make sure that they, they stay playing. And then the Village of Addison, uh, was at forty thousand and they get to help along with sixty-two thousand, five hundred and, which bumps inside there. So, yeah, significant increases for the villagers. But I think that's a good.
Does that was just, the reason, it's all the elections, it's very, it's in places voting versus township and general.
Thank you. I can just say that it's, it's very unique, this situation. Um, yeah, we often say that the villages are part of the township because they are part of the township. They, um, and proudly, we're, we're proud that they are. Um, but they are also, they're unique jurisdiction and they have their own council, their own mayors and their, so we can't dictate and say, uh, village X, Y, Z, you have to, we can't put a tax on them. They have to decide what level of service that they want to receive and, and then, you know, like trustee Boran said, there's a contract. So hopefully we, uh, but levies on where they are.
Thank you.
Sir.
So to spin off his question there, um, how much are the contracted municipalities paying for one hundred thousand dollars? Miami Township.
It's going to be different based upon their, their, uh, their mileage amounts.
In the, in the past, the township had charged on millage rate and some of the villages came to us and said, you know, we'd rather have a flat dollar rate. So we, I really didn't figure the, um, the amount per hundred thousand for them. But we did, um, take into account that the villages, we're not a fire district. So the villages don't have a vote, they don't have a say in the operations. So in my opinion, they should pay a little less because of that. And I think that's why they're a little less in charge to them, because they don't have the, the vested interest in the equipment and the buildings and things. And they're free to also go and, um, and contract with somebody else. So, um, you know, and I believe all three villages looked at other options while they were doing their negotiations. They did their due diligence, which is good. Uh, they, their residents deserve that and we're glad they chose to stay with us. But we think we came up with a well-to-repair price for everybody.
The Village of Cleats only, uh, for, for the first year, uh, that was a twenty-five percent increase. So pretty stout of the notion, so built an increase going on. So we recognized that there was, there was some, some issue with how they had, what kind of, with.
I guess one other thing I, I like seats that you like pie charts is a pie chart of like my, how many runs our department is making in each jurisdiction?
It's not a pie chart, but I think I can forget in my, I don't know.
The, the, the thousand, three, two runs, they would increase twenty percent of the run by. Uh, Cleats was at twenty-one, thirty-nine, it was twenty-two percent of our runs. Uh, Miami Township was fifty-eight, fifty-five, with, with just like sixty percent of the run total. And North Bend was seven, eighty-seven. That break out somewhere of each individual one for the year.
So, so you just said, uh, all, all runs that Miami Township Fire Department is paying, you know, like fifty-eight percent of them for it actually in Miami Township. Uh, and the other ones, okay, sixty percent.
Any other questions? Sergeant, sir, do you have any?
No. I was hoping that, um, if anybody had any questions, please, please ask.
If, if you could go back on the slide, where the money goes to the taxes collected, to the county?
To the county. One more question?
One more? There's another one. Alright, that's good. So, okay, how about the, the slide where how much the township gives area?
You can see the total millage right now for the township is, um, twelve point nine one. Um, I put the effective millage in because the, uh, the, the continuous levy for the fire fund is three point two nine mils. But in today's rates, it would, uh, only take two point six six mils to generate the amount that that three point two nine levy generates. Because when you pass a levy, a lot of people don't realize this, the levy brings in that amount. No matter how much new construction we get, thing, uh, whatever the millage is, whatever the amount is, that's what we get. So when you have that continuous levy, uh, that's three point two nine, but if we were going to ask for that today, we could get by with two point six there. So.
Okay, so Hamilton County has a general fund where they would like our taxes.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that at some point years ago before the law was changed, uh, before TIFs were created, the county would get to keep all that money. Is that close, is that right?
I believe yes.
Yeah.
So now, are the TIF funds reflected in, in this?
No, this is just tax levying funds.
Okay, so there is more money that comes in for things like equipment, buildings and high roadways. And that's not really, uh, the taxpayers of the township would be paying that whether we get TIF money or not.
Correct.
So it was kind of a gift from the county, not really a gift, but it's, it's nice, nice to get the money.
Yeah, and, and folks at the county would like all to get. Obviously, they're not happy because, because we did that money. But, um, and I think the trustees have been good stewards of that money since back when you first got it, um, all back to sitting back there. I think you were here when they.
Thank you, Father. And, uh.
How much did it, what did we get last year?
Probably, well, probably four, four point five million, but we have, it goes back to the school district.
So they did about two.
Fifty-seven percent is back to school.
And I would like, I'm glad Mr. Brett pointed out about the, uh, the set amount, because that is a, a misnomer. I mean, I can't tell you how many times and I'm sure these guys have all heard it as well. People say, oh, we just got this new subdivision, we've got this new, uh, whatever, um, I'm sure you guys are just rolling in it. You keep bringing it more and more and more in it. It does, it really is a set, you know, a set amount. Um, so later that was, we're laying that out and again, that's something that you can share when you're out talking to your neighbors and your friends and your, um, you know, folks in whatever jurisdiction. And the chief is playing, uh, um, PowerPoint, uh, slide, but I do want to say that appreciate everything you've been doing, you and your team and captains and then everybody that, they're doing a great job on training, getting information out as well. So I do, you guys.
I think we should also, right here. Um, yeah, chief Shulman, would you like to stand up?
I'll be questioning if I chief come on, get, get yours tonight.
Everybody has any questions?
Captain Travis King is here with us tonight. The, um, we need to recognize the fact that, uh, we have some folks that formed the political action committee that are working on this. And the union firefighters on their own time, uh, were the ones who were out passing out those door hangers and things. So, um, there's quite a bit of, of wrangling about what elected officials can and can't do. Um, I think the law is loosening up back to where elected officials can, can do more in supporting a levy. But we cannot, any of our employees, any of our trustees can't go out and say both for or against a valid issue. So, but we can have meetings like this where we can tell you where, where your money goes. So.
So you said that levy that failed would have gone in one point nine.
Okay.
What, one nine? Somewhere in range. Then you said the four point five that's going to be on the ballot this time, the three and one point six?
One six six four.
So how much are you going to continue to have to take out of the general fund to support the target? Roughly, I mean, it's.
That, I, probably, I would say probably it was like six hundred thousand, I would say two or three hundred thousand. Now that might be, yeah, so I mean, we still have to lose it. That's why we put that, that's why we on, to support and not take it out of the general fund. So this time, I mean, we're going to still have to. I want to say at least half, but we're, it's still going to help the general fund because that's something we don't want to do either. Put another in next year. That was kind of the reasoning we did that because we didn't want to come back and put a general.
I think if you feel like this, Miami, the five will get us to twenty-nine. We, we feel good about that, we feel like we don't have to come back for, for general fund. Yeah, cost of everything has gone up and, um, you know, it, it's, it's the reality of we're dependent and nobody wants to pay. But then you go back to that, certainly, you're not going to sit here and put this thing on, but, uh, if we want to continue to have, you know, fire service like, or like re-依然, we got to do this.
We've got, we've got money in the TIF fund. It can only be used for equipment.
Major.
Buildings that's separate, you know, some of it's, you know, pretty new. Yeah, but can you get money in that and ever make money? And if you do, like CDs and stuff like that, where does that money go? Is that going into the party department?
It goes into the general fund.
Then you, then can you use it for salaries?
We cannot put that back into the fire, there are certain funds that we can put in interest. Majority of it goes into the general fund.
Are you doing that now?
Oh, well, we've been.
What do we, what's our?
Uh, we, we get, interest wise, we get about eighty a month, eighty thousand a month. So general fund probably gets sixty thousand a month, but that's been budgeting for years. I mean, well, back in, or back then, we didn't get much, but the last two or three years, we've been getting eighty, a hundred thousand a year, year on interest.
One of the things that trustees and the fiscalists are done is, um, moving away from CDs and trying to.
I said.
To play that and move to a state fund called SCAR, Ohio More Money, and the interest rate is a little better there. So, um, and we're, we're looking at other options for investments, but right now, we're, we're in all one hundred percent guarantee funds. Uh, there's some other funds out there that we could look at and, um, you know, other, other jurisdictions, have good luck with them. But, you know, we're going to be conservative, we need to stick to the core, ahead of now. And maybe we'll, we'll watch the other trades, see where they're going and we might have to move to some of those other opportunities too, and maybe that interest.
We get about forty thousand right now, but the bank can.
How long before the TIF ceases? We just got an extension, thirty, thirty-nine, we have a fifteen year extension and you have twenty, twenty-four, seventy minutes. Yeah, so fair well. Uh, last question I have is, man, I'm. Four, forty-five mils will get us back to three mils on station?
Correct.
Did you say correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I got it.
Yes.
Okay.
And then just add on, that'll be, you'll be able to maintain that.
Correct, yeah.
Chief, that's, what would be the maximum daily staffing if it has thirteen?
That one right there.
And then, so if, um, wha, wha, what about daily services? Public education, par safety in education, that sort of thing. Is that enough money, the four point five?
It is, and, and hope that we can even ramp that up a little bit. Just the plan, yeah.
Does, does that include any additional like, uh, daytime people, forty hour weeks down, or do, with the shift beat will start now? And, and the goal is, dude, just so everyone's in here, the safer grant has an open jet, but that's a grant that the, the federal government has for, for staffing. Um, we're currently down six people. The plan was to put in that safer grant and that covers a hundred percent of salaries for, for three years. Right, so we budget for those salaries anyway, so like we would be able to keep that money and create a carryover for, you know, right now, we're operating with a carryover. So kudos to the past administrations for, for, for keeping, uh, traffic, financing and everything else, or what I think we reinforce there now. But the goal would be to apply for that safer grant to help get us back up there. And, um, the, the four point five mil levy will allow us to, um, operate more efficiently for sure. So with the daily staffing of thirteen, um, how's that full-time versus part-time?
So what would that be, thirty?
So it'd be, it'd be sixty, forty?
Okay.
Sixty percent full-time, if you agree with that?
Yeah.
I would page back on Scott's question, is, the Miami portion, other, what, we're shutting down stations now. What is the reason we shut the stations down now, but we're going to pass a four point five? And what, if we're working on carryover money, we have that money available? What's going to, I guess, what's going to change when we pass a four point five? If we can't staff it now, are we going to hire with the four point five? Will we hire a bunch of part timers and full timers? So, so we won't be closing, I guess is what, I, I guess I'm kind of confused.
So the, the reason we reduced minimum staffing from nine to six is because we're working a carryover, right? So the goal, if, if we were to continue operating where we have been, filling overtime to, to keep us at nine, right? That one point six of the carryover is going to dwindle pretty quick. That's to keep from having to lay folks off, right?
I, I guess I, I understand that portion of that. We're closing, I, at nine, I, I guess that's what I'm confused, get, get back to nine.
Yeah.
I just don't understand why we aren't there. Uh, and I guess what you're saying, I, I.
The, the goal is to, to get that carryover to last all year.
Year, we budgeted based on the carryover.
But on the last levy we passed, we were supposed to be at four point four at each station and that never happened. So I, I, there should have been extra funds somewhere along the lines. So I thought there should have been extra funds somewhere along the lines.
Well, I think that's that's part of that 1.6. No, no, no.
I'm just, I'd like to know where the money for.
Yeah, I can't speak this, I can't speak to the past, right?
Yeah, I was sold to this board, forward.
Yeah.
Maybe that was planned, so I'm just.
But I also think that, and I think the staffing did increase. But if it did, I don't know if it was, yeah, I don't know when and at time, because when I got here, it was 12. And that had been probably within the. Yeah, so I think it did increase before, the problem was we didn't have the people to get it up to 4.44, if that makes sense? So with that, created, we budgeted that money, but since we weren't filling it because we didn't have the people to fill it, it created a carryover we have now to be able to operate through, hopefully through the end of the year. But to get us through February, March of next year, and we get that person installed, if if the levy passes.
And I think that, so if I can just, so if I can just add on to that. When we passed that levy six years ago, we had our ratio of part timers and full timers was different, so our salaries were different. So we didn't thought we could carry that 4.44 over, because at that time, we were 70 with the part time, 30 with the full time. But that flip and change, obviously, a lot of the salary schedule. So that's why it took us a little longer to to get there. That was when we originally did it, we were looking at the model we had. Unfortunately, as COVID hit, that affected also some people in the job, they wanted, no longer wanting to be in the job. So we lost a lot of part time folks. I think the the chief kind of alluded to this, but want to also make sure that everyone knows that we're not getting any money, even if we pass this in May until June.
Right, right.
And then that that he was kind of talking about that sort of, there just like, we talked about the levy not bringing anything more because of our population growth. We need the certainty, though, in May, hopefully, to be able to budget and do the thing we need to do for the fire chief and his his leadership team to know that we have that that funds, but but those aren't coming in until the first of the year essentially. So we still have to lay due and get by and stretch our hours.
Follow this year.
Until until we get to that. Did you have any other questions?
Yes, so I think it's important to know what the services we're going to have when this levy passes. But also on the other end of it, if it fails, what's going to be the outcome?
So if it fails, we lay all of our part timers off, potentially, shouldn't say potentially, for sure, at least a minimum of 10 full timers. To even, because that that only gives us $850,000 plus some EMS billing to operate through. And that's, if it fails in in November, then it failed in May, and then they decided to put it on in November, and it failed in November, we're closing two firehouses. Well, like, there's no other option, I mean, there just isn't money there, if that that makes sense.
Yeah, so laying off all part timers, laying off 10 full timers, so how many full timers are that leaving, like where are you at?
15.
15, okay.
14, 14. Yeah. So divide that by three, three shifts, right? That's that's bare bones, 4.7, then you got a lot of them have their own time.
Oh, yeah.
Each and I'm sticking on, yep, whatnot. Okay.
So back to the general levy, for the general.
In general fund, we brought up, we have not, despite credit more, we have, it's 0.46, our general levy village. That has not been increased for eight or 60 years, since 1960 something. And we've been really good about trying not to do that, and we don't want to tax you guys. I hope you all, I think you all understand that, that when it comes to fire safety, please save me, if we all understand that safety is.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, so I think I think everyone in here agrees, I know the board agrees, that our police and our fire are top priorities in our community, along with our school district. They aren't for being, I'm sure there are for a lot of anything too. You know, without your police and fire, who, why would, why would you want to live there? If you're not going to have, I think, top notch police and fire, but that's just my take on it. So do we got any more other questions? Any anything else from the board?
I just want to say, the 4.5, so people were like, it's getting it back to the level that it's been for a year. You know, pie in the sky was six and a half, well, damn, but let's go to 4.5 and realize what we've got with paramedics. You know, the paramedic situation is the best thing that we've ever come up with, and we need to keep it. And I think the people get to go back to their day, it's a shame there's only 20 people, 25 people here. 15,000 people that live in the township, that they rely on fire, EMS, paramedic. They just, they almost take it for granted, well, it's not for granted, they got to be, the money's got to come. It's no longer volunteer and hope you find somebody to cover it, it's it's a cost. And 4.5 brings it back to the basic, good level of service that we had, we're used to. Like I said, hitting your neighbors, you know, I went to our township, or in our homeowner association, and passed out the literature, and they listened to me, I got a steal. Other homeowners situations where there's several need to do the same thing. They can put out a thing, a blue, a word on their website or their email to support this. And I I hope that maybe Chief Schuman might contact the presidents of those homeowner association and ask them for their support. They'll give it to you if you ask them, and we've got all their names and HOA presidents, there's about six or eight of them. And there's thousands of people there that we need to, you know, the back where Mike lives and Pepper Chase, you know, they've all got HOA associations. Fished and pushed, they, we need to get it passed.
We've we've actually offered to come out to any of their meetings or to hold all the damn meetings here. And as you probably know, and I'm sure you don't want people coming in politicking, your homeowners association meeting, and that's what most of them told me last time.
They know.
But I think a fire and EMS levy is not politicking, it's information providing, and that I really wish.
That's why they'll put a board out, you know, an email to all their residents, which they get that list, and they can put out, you know, in seconds.
Yeah, we definitely can come back.
We actually, yeah, Mr. Brett, we sent that, the entire newsletter out to all the presidents and with an offer. And and we'll send another between now and probably next week, because sometimes people get an email and they're busy and they don't think about it. So we're going to, we're going to keep asking them for their support offering to come and meet with them, offering to have them in here.
Anything else from the board?
No, I mean, just to think, we we all hear that we take it for granted, we do. But all of us have heard, a resident, I know we've all heard dozens that come up and say, you know what? Didn't know what we had until I had to make that call, and I made that call, whether it was you or your loved ones or whatever else, they come up and say, your your folks did a fantastic job, and staying here is living proof because of it, and it's it's hard for me, but, you know, if you haven't been affected, it's easy to take it for granted, but hopefully folks realize what we're getting.
And the other thing, people, this chart and the pie chart that goes with this, with somebody who came in and said, and so I I saw the where the county dollars go, but what happened to my township dollars, where where did it go? And I said, well, we put that together, we have, and, you know, so if you have a suggestion, if you have an idea. Someone called today and said, we didn't realize you're only asking for 1% more, we we didn't realize 3.5 renewal went away. They thought that was going to stay no matter what. So so we're going to change some stuff on our website so that they know that we're we're asking for 4.5 to replace the 3.5 that was renewed last year. So because they thought they had renewed the 3.5 and we were asking for 4.5 more. So the way way tax levies are calculated is is difficult, I think, even for those of us who do it all the time. And so it's confusing for people, and if you know, if somebody gets a question, just have a call, and if we don't have the answer, we'll get it.
All right, I started before you write the media.
Okay.
The quadrant, and it's in our acre, we packed our property up with a small set of woods that goes around all the way to the end of quadrant. There's private property, it's about acres a piece. Going to my backyard, looked at, I had to jump up out of my seat, go in there and look out the window. Well, going through my yard, my neighbor's yard, looked like me, there was a. I am.
Scott, I get the money through my yard every day.
Yeah, well, this was 5A.
Well, they're they're a problem, because no one, we have no owners and nobody that traps them. They used to get a trap along, now they're just garage, and it's deer population is so much.
Never seen one in all down here.
Oh, yeah, I see, I'm not exaggerating, I live on Bruce now, and I see them probably in Lincoln. See, I hear them back in Perkins Park at night.
Down there, there was a fence in my property, my neighbor's property, that's a long way. This thing went up to that fence and went into that neighbor's yard on Brumba, then it came back out and went up to the edge of the woods, turned around and stood about this much of a body out in the yard area. Then a few minutes later, it turned, went back in, then turned around again, and it was like, so he said, there's a little dog around.
Oh, no crap, it don't, they call it, I go to them and say, you got to be determined, so I guess.
There's one other thing I would like to say, I would like to applaud the board and also Administrator Brett and Fire Chief. You you guys are trying to get the word out, it it is appreciated, and it's very hard. It's been my experience that people just don't know, they're so uninformed. You know, the last one we had when we were out talking to the public, you know, people still thought we were a volunteer fire company, you know? And and they don't realize that that our firefighters have families to feed too, and they've got to pay the salaries to keep them competitive. Not all these firefighters are going to go to other jurisdictions. I mean, there is a huge shortage of firefighters these days, and and these full time firefighters don't stay with the department, they're jumping from department to department. So whatever you can to keep them guys here, you know, if you're putting a lot of training into them and a lot of time into them, and we need them to stay here, you know? So so to lose five or 10, you said, firefighters that we've done a lot of money into and training and time, and that it's unacceptable. We we need to keep them here. But I I applaud yous for trying to get the word out, it is difficult. I I wish I had advice for yous on how to get the word out, and it's hard.
The newsletter's a great start, the newsletter's a great start, I think, and I'm, I just, I think it was really, really telling.
I think door hangers, the door hangers, very good idea.
Yeah.
But I. Run door, see you.
And then I catch your act.
I honestly believe, I honestly believe for vote 90, the fire levy republics, 60 service levies is continuous. It it's just not two months before the levy goes on, we need to constantly be getting our word out. So, you know, if every month or quarter that the chief can get something into that newsletter, you know, trying to educate the people on what services that they're getting from the fire department, I I think would be huge, you know, just my.
That's a great idea, that's a great idea.
I think you need to concentrate more on it, senior citizen people, that's on a financial problem, they get a year or a week a month to make, make, they make it a thousand dollars a month. And that's hard to live on. That's going to be a big problem.
Can we rush it to a jury?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on a second.
Mr. Baller?
Yep.
Mr. Blanley?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Thanks for coming, everyone, please spread the word and support our levy.
Anybody wants a levy sign, I have some out here.